Caught up on. Travis, discuss northeast Iowa workforce area merger consideration. You brought this up in a community assignment. So your meeting is on Thursday the seventeenth?
Yep.
And they want to merge with another?
They want to merge basically the whole.
East side?
East side of the state.
Are they merging the officers of the four? Or was the merger?
The way I understand it is. Basically, everything.
You're just gonna try to pull that map real quick.
Yeah, they're gonna. What I understand is. It was going to. Everybody's gonna work together.
And this is due to federal cuts and state cuts?
State cuts, yes.
State cuts only?
No, both.
Both? To Iowa workforce?
Yep.
And you're like, we're member have concern with telling our representative Iowa workforce? Any direction for him to vote or he's on that committee to put him on there back in January?
My biggest thing is they want. They want to get this done before August first. Because so the government can. Okay, it. Yes. Way I understand it is if we merge. We can. We'll still have say.
So you're looking at northeast Iowa, which is us, east central Iowa, Mississippi Valley, and south central would all merge into one?
Yep.
Kind of look like the Iowa plains, which is the west part of the state.
Yep.
Central Iowa state is in.
Yep.
So they want to go from. Six areas down to three. And then maybe eventually the merge all three to one like they did with CSS?
Probably. Yeah, will happen. The state on the west half. And the way I understand it is. They could do that with us too, but if we merge, there's less than a chance.
Does all four regions have to vote on this?
Yes. Everybody in each county has to vote.
I think just keep some sane and decision making locally, I think you're gonna have to merge. But that's just my two cents.
That's kind of where I was at too, like in.
Anybody else have an other opinion about? Let Travis go back on Thursday to. Honestly, it's up to you because you're on that committee, but I think the four of us say. Merge with the other three regions. You can put a consensus to direct. You can take it with grand assault.
Yeah.
Um, but to allow the merger of the four. East, some east Iowa to merge.
So that east central Iowa district there, they are still on the fence?
So that be Cedar Rapids area, Iowa City area?
Yep, but the other three want to go together. The northeast, south central and Mississippi Valley want to go for sure.
Mississippi Valley, south central and northeast Iowa. The east central, which is Cedar Rapids, Iowa City is still on the fence of it.
Yeah, it is still on the fence, but. Can't it sound like they will, they're going to?
All right, you got it Travis?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, I got one fifteen. I put this on here as concerned citizens regarding closure of bridge. On one fiftieth street west of V eighteen. Just gonna put some highlights to this discussion. Neighbors, landlords, renters are, some of you guys are here today. The engineer cannot be with us today, but the assistant is with us. If there's any engineering stuff, we'll refer to her, but. So this bridge has been talked since two thousand, I think I got sixteen. So April of sixteen, this bridge, I think we all know where it's at, it's a steel structural bridge. Um, it was degraded down to a fifteen twenty-five twenty-five rating. In June of twenty twenty, it was degraded down to a seven ton bridge. In April of twenty-three, it was down to a three ton bridge. And then on June thirtieth, this board with the recommendation from engineer along with Eliza, who's the consultant we use? Burns? Who's the consultant we use?
County.
Associates, they came back and pretty much said hard close. Um, she does have pictures if we want to share those, if you want to talk about the pictures a little bit, this would be the time.
It's, they give us annual reports and they have all the conditions and their reasoning for closure and they're passed around.
Yes, some of the highlights that I saw, um, a lot of beams are like a toothpick.
Right.
They're hollow.
Saturday day, mostly.
So that is a pack it from our consultant that the secondary road system uses for engineering purposes and keeping our bridges safe for the public to travel across. We'll get into this, um, the engineer did provide the board some information of. Let's clean up any rumors, please. So this bridge is in the five year plan. Uh, we, the board approve a five year plan to DOT once a year. Um, this bridge is in that five year plan to be constructed in twenty thirty. Um, this board has that final say. As of right now, it's not been engineered, has not been surveyed. Uh, that would take at least, from the engineer told me last week, it would take at least two years to survey, to get the DNR permits, to have the DOT approve this construction. So we're two years out. That anything will change, we have the right with the engineer's recommendation to change a project within that five years. Estimated cost in twenty twenty-five is one point three eight seven million dollars. So almost one point four million. The lifespan of a bridge that we have built in today is seventy years. The average daily traffic count on this bridge, Eliza, do you know when the last survey was taken?
Almost for twenty twenty-one, but it's going on this year right now.
So twenty twenty-one, the average daily traffic count was thirty vehicles per day on this said bridge on one fiftieth. Some of the reasons why, um, we were concerned about the hard closure and not letting you guys know about it. Was we know that there's a low void crossing it, uh, we know some emergency vehicles crossed it. You know, that comes back on the public safety side of it. Uh, we can't sit out there with law enforcement every single minute to watch people drive across our bridges. So for public safety and anybody else that needs it, uh, we had it closed. With the recommendation from the engineer's office. Did I miss anything on the engineer's side of it? Lister Giraffe reached out to me last week to get this on the agenda, Lynn, I'll let you have the floor, anybody else after, but go ahead.
Good afternoon. I have questions, concerns, as you had said regarding that bridge. Um, I am a landlord.
Yep.
I own a, my sisters and I own a semper farm. I'm just up the road, I'm here, our all neighbors. So the questions and concerns that I have is. Number one, my concern for land for my renter who would extremely appreciate the farm to market value of that, of that bridge. And all of these guys are tested, traffic counts and things like that. I just think for farm to market values, it has to have some value in that for there. Another thing that I'm concerned with, public access to a public piece property there. That's a private property and these guys are testing how much is used. I'd like to talk about that. How much bring that cable to you, how you're gonna do. Another thing that I'm really concerned with is. That farm of ours is a semper farm. So my great grandfather paid taxes on that farm for a hundred years and so have all the other people. So my concern is all the taxes have been paid on that road or on that property or on that bridge. Should go with the bridge, I think it's, it's their right or our right to maintain that bridge. Just because it gets too expensive, that's a terrible amount of money, I know that. And then you need, you owe it to those tenants that live on that, on that road. To have a fair market, farm to market road. And a safer, I appreciate your safety concerns, you did a great job in that concerns. But I really wish you to take that into consideration. So the question I have, we're beyond box culvert here, this is not a box culvert bridge. It couldn't be a box culvert?
We're currently replacing the bridge upstream with a two hundred and thirteen foot deep bridge. So we only need more credit area when we come downstream, a mile, so it'll be at least.
A lot larger.
That would be a beam, flat, flat beam brick.
Correct. And I think the other issue that I've been told is that bridge on one fiftieth is so far in the creek. It's so high.
So high, yep.
To avoid flooding it out and to get the people across. That valley, I own a farm up there too guys, you guys all know who I am. So I own a farm a mile and a half west of there. I, I hear your concerns.
So you understand the importance of farming.
Yes.
And all these guys, all these good, good farmers in that area and they deserve to keep their property up where it used to be, so. That's all I had, anybody else want to add?
Kind of add one comment, so we do have one bridge closed on the county line. It's been closed for probably five, six years now. Yes, to, to defend the property tax, um, on real service basic, we can only collect three dollars and fifty cents. Three ninety-five, sorry, I think. Most of the year, it doesn't even cover the rock we put on those roads. So we can raise taxes up to the max and bring in more money, um, and then do direct projects with RSV funds. If that's the way, we should move forward. But we have not done that.
If that's your responsibility to turn the RSV funds. I, I think, I think you owe, I think you owe the taxpayers and property owners of these farming roads to maintain to and from. Their property.
Gotcha. All right, anybody else?
Uh, my concern is that.
Anyone, sorry. A lot of us need to learn, but can you just say your name and?
Uh, Jordan Grober, uh, we own property in that area on one fiftieth and we farm ground on both sides. Uh, my concern is if it's closed, uh, it's gonna keep getting kicked down the road. Um, that Franklin Road, that's where all the machine traffic is coming at from now for the service. People don't stop, don't slow down on that road, somebody's gonna get killed going over that hill. Um, we got tractors that are fifteen, eighteen, twenty feet wide. And people are flying down that road and that road is not a good road to be going and meeting people on. You know, that's a two mile section too, it ain't just around to one mile, it is a two mile section and then with the curves in the road, any road access to that highway from where we're at was mainly over that bridge, can't run over with a ringer, you can't go over the skid loader, you can't go over the pickup nine handle around the section. I got family members that ride tractor, they're not comfortable on the highway. Uh, emergency service people access that as a problem or anybody in that area. People that don't know the area can't get there.
So we guess, thank you, um, anything else? Jordan, so my, my concern is I noted that this is two years out to even move it up on one of our heavier traffic roads. Would it help if we direct the county engineer to make that curve a little wider in the meantime? We all know Franklin, is it Franklin?
It's on top of the hill, it's the biggest problem.
Yeah.
That is a massive hill. And then people are coming from the south and flying over that hill.
Um, somebody told me, I don't know if it's true, I haven't confirmed that yet, but there was a someone that got up there and he got back all the way back down.
I'm gonna have a bunker down.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's so narrow.
Any other concerns on the one fifty?
I have about the same concerns, I've watched people, my ground's, Sharon, hi.
Thank you.
Sorry. My ground is on both sides of the road, I have a forty on the west side of the bridge and I have a hundred and twenty on the north side. Um, and I've watched the people come over bunker hill and they do not, they come straight out the middle of that road and down the other side and it's not a safe situation one way or the other.
Five years kind of seems like a long time considering the fact that this bridge has been in decline for twenty years.
Yeah, so the first post in that they said was in two thousand sixteen. So nine years ago, it went from a normal thirty eighty eighty down to a fifteen twenty-five twenty-five.
Um, Debbie Gosling?
Yes.
Same, obviously, you know, I go back and forth to work. The hill, it's blind hill, one hundred percent narrow and you don't know somebody's coming, the other day it was wet. And you try to get over it for the car and now you're being sucked into the ditch. I don't do well with that kind of stuff, so, um, and I, I mean, I think, I guess that's the biggest thing in just the fact that all of a sudden you come home and the bridge is closed and now you gotta go to work. And you know, what are you gonna do, we have no clue what that's gonna be like in the winter. You know, we know what ours is, you know, one fiftieth is, but we just don't have any idea what to expect now. So, and it is narrow.
If you wrote that down, Eliza, for sign each and on that hill?
Is there a field rag on either side of it?
Uh, both sides, I believe. We might have to put some machinery signs up or something, but we'll talk.
You talked about the five year plan, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You explain all that, so the bridge has been a girl, you ain't for a long time, you just come up with a five year deal?
So that's a good question for the engineer unless she can help, but the five year plan is required by the state DOT to have projects in that five year plan. It's based off a lot of the farm to market money that we get or the swap dollars from the federal government, I believe now.
No more swaps.
Or no more swap, it's federal dollars. So it's, it's funny, um, how many bridges can we do a year if barely, but we can do one? With the money that's coming in from, uh, your field tax, your federal dollars, farm to market money.
Can you address the issue of whether money overlaps a hundred years? I mean, I, I don't know how you, how you address that, you know what I'm trying to say? There's been a lot of money that's spent by these people.
No, I, I get that.
Yeah, yeah.
The road on Cheyenne was a local letting about three, four years ago, that was a local office sales tax. An engineer, doesn't matter if it's the current one or the past, in my time, it's always their recommendation. We get to approve the five year plan and. We can put priority on this. But I think a lot of us understand the traffic count and I get your concern, don't get me wrong. I would love to use that road too.
Can I just ask how the traffic count changed to me, I'm just curious?
The DOT does.
Or when?
They have the strips down.
You did?
In twenty twenty-one, they do it every four years maybe.
So the strips are down today, they got put out yesterday.
Yeah.
I didn't.
On our road?
Um, on a lot of the black tops. You have a.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm living in Dan's and I live right east of the bridge.
You're good.
This is my husband's fault.
Um, so who actually does the?
The DOT.
The DOT does traffic.
I saw him on Highway eighteen, but I didn't see him on our road, so.
Yeah, me neither.
Is there a possibility that this five year plan, because you said you guys have the right to adjust it? When you adjusted, is there any possibility that you're gonna say, just kidding, we're not gonna do this now, or is it just definitely?
Oh, there's always a consideration. No, there is, there is on any bridge or any, any, uh, blacktop resurfacing too. It's all about allegation funds, right? It's, it's where the money is and how can you appropriate those funds for that set project? You know, we would have to look at if a bridge would go to that type of structure of decay. If it has a, what, what if it's on a blacktop? What if it's on another two hundred cap road? I'm not saying you guys don't need a bridge, it's just majority of.
Does the ringback situation out there affect it at all, like is there any potential since we've got the hunting and the fishing and that is county conservation ground, does that change? There's no funds or anything or?
No, but I know.
We do have to get a phone call to Chad, our director, to look at moving those signs or at least covering them up. So they don't turn around and cans in the driveway all the time, but those signs need to be covered up because the road is closed. Did you have something?
I did, um, I would just want to say I appreciate the opening for the bike passage and the pedestrian passage that happened today. Um, two weeks ago, the signs were put up, the barricade was put up, that it was closed. Last week on Monday, they came and everyone probably knows dumped about two loads of black dirt on each end of the bridge, which I did not understand. So I did make a phone call to Mr. Roman Lenzey, the engineer and tried to poison my opinion with that and, and then today I met a backhoe coming down the road as I was leaving and my husband talked to whoever was driving and they said they were gonna at least put an opening in case the neighbors didn't know, but I guess my ultimate question was, um, is there any bridge grant money available? Um, or is that the swap?
That's, that's the federal dollars.
Okay. Okay. I know, I talked to a nephew that works in Boyd County, which probably has nothing to do with jigsaw money, but he says there is a lot of grant money available, I didn't know if we were applying for grant money.
If we are.
Specifically for bridges.
I, I'm gonna talk about the piles of dirt. We found out in the years past that if you just put a barricade up, some people like to take them down and drive through it. So the piles of dirt, um, I don't think people are gonna drive through a pile of dirt.
That's what he said. I told him I was concerned about it growing a bunch of weeds and I really didn't appreciate him telling me to go and plant flowers on it.
Yeah, that would not be a good comment to take.
It was not, so granted, I didn't know if I should buy the flowers and send the bill to the county. I do appreciate it being opened up for bikes and children to walk across and pedestrians, a lot of us are walkers. Health is important.
It is.
As these folks have mentioned.
Anybody else on this bridge, uh, we take your comments to heart, um, just like I said, uh, we have to look at the safety though, we don't want somebody to fall down and, and potentially hurt or kill themselves on a bridge that our engineers have showed that it needed to be closed.
What about rock and?
Oh, the one on west and north. I guess it's never been brought up to us.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to comment or just let Roman?
It's a two round road, so we like they need more right away and the shade that we do it better because it's it's very wet in the middle portion. People, rock would, it would lock very well. It's a laborious nature on the bridge.
Any other concerns on the one fiftieth bridge west of P eighteen?
I guess just the five year plan, I mean, verbally I talked to the previous supervisor Rick when it closed and he said it was on the five year plan four years ago.
So this is the first time it's been closed, right?
Right.
Been degraded.
Degraded. To the point where you couldn't cross it with a tractor. So I mean, what's, what's the five year plan meaning that it's been on the five year?
I can just share with you, it's the five people that people like to put in a seat and opinions change.
So there's no possibility of blocks of car culverts or any road water type crossing or anything different than a one and a half million dollar bridge?
I want up straight and it's two hundred and thirteen feet long.
But it goes across the road regardless anyway, I mean, the bridge stands probably in the water, it's all across the road everywhere around it anyway, because the ground, I mean, are you gonna raise the whole road then for the whole half mile? I mean, that's what don't make any sense to me.
But I'm not an engineer. My brother, I have three brothers that are. In a flood, you don't want the bridge to come out. So that's why the low bottom, you want to flood the bottoms, you don't want to flood the structure. That's why that bridge is so high. What I said, am I correct?
Yeah. It's gonna be massive traffic either way.
So one and a half million dollars now, is it gonna be two million dollars in five years?
I mean, and then you're gonna say, well, no, we can't do it, I mean, ten years, cool, it was shot, so. I think I can honestly say we see that daily on cost of doing business. While the labor rates are maxed out. Any other questions on one fiftieth? Alright, thanks guys.
Thanks for your time to observe.
Thank you.
So this will come up as an action item, ready?
It's up to the engineer to bring it to us, but we just approved the five year plan, I would say in April, May we did that? So every April, May, we approve a five year plan.
So it's officially off the books now for?
It is slated for twenty thirty to be replaced. If this board wants to change that, we have to amend the five year plan and get our staff to start designing it, which will take at least two years. So yeah, get it closed for at least two years until we revote on a five year plan. That's how long a bridge takes to design.
So there's no chances of moving that up from twenty thirty or, I mean, if we file a petition with the neighbors?
We can take a petition, um, but I think Dave, the petition is handled pretty much the same way as our five votes.
That one's gonna do me different, it's up to you guys to decide how allocate your money and how to spend your money. Unfortunately, it's probably not the first time in my career here that that's gonna happen. With deteriorating roads and bridges all across the state of Iowa. And it's up to these guys to do the stewards of the money that they receive both locally and from federal and state grants and matching funds to determine what's the best way to allocate those funds and that's their call, that's how to do so.
Alright, thanks guys, we're gonna move on here, so. Thank you. I need to give these guys a heads up, so I haven't done that, so we'll move to discuss the Cedar Lake Improvement Council Agreement. They will request it to be on here. Scott represents us and Travis as the alternate, um, Scott, do you have anything new or?
I don't really have anything new as far as update for the city of Nashua.
Do you think as, or any board member, do you think it's time to dissolve or change the current twenty eighty? David brought it up last week that it's on his file to be looked at, we'll discuss. I don't know what our ancestors did back in the day when it became a twenty eighty. I suppose they had some concerns of watershed to water quality, water quantity issues.
But I think it could be eight, my guess, and then decide what to do.
Correct.
As long as it's technical by the laws, so I think that can be us. Schedule a meeting, call the mayor of Nashua, say we're meeting, we may have seven meetings in the next month or two and get as many people as you can together, prepare what you're gonna do, if it's worth keeping together and if people are gonna work on it or it's, that's curious. It's kind of a little for a while, I guess, so.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, we can do, we can do that, I mean, I think that's stage that we discussed between the two entities.
Uh, just three.
Yeah, the conservation works well, yeah.
Yeah, dude.
Well, you need to address it pretty soon, if you get the dam fixed, your next problem is your siltation. And you're using tourism money for that, it's not very deep. I'd just like to see the committee inform you, if somebody make a decision on and allocate the money. This is gonna come see you in a.
Yes, all right, I got it. Scott will do that, right? Perfect, anybody else have a comment, board? Thank you. Thank you. We'll just try to get this out of the way, but I know with the people in attendance, it might not, they might wanna hear this all, but discuss budget amendment number one fiscal year 25, 26. Um, Sheila, you did get some requests from some departments.
Right, so. So the BA needs to increase their revenue. And that's just because when he goes on his meetings and that if he increases from 10,000 and he hasn't told me what number he wants to increase it to, but um, he can get reimbursed in like this last year, he used 10,641 dollars versus just the 10,000. So he would like that increased.
The revenue or the expense?
The revenue. But he wants it on his books.
I see.
Yeah.
One of the biggest ones that we're gonna be talking about later is the cooling tower on the courthouse. That has been estimated at 112, 125 to replace that. We'll let Dave talk about that, but that's why this budget amendment is kind of needed in a timely manner. Um, and that's why we asked the other departments if they had anything. Who else had one?
So then we had Chad who was looking for a new storage building. He said that it was talked in during the tip, but it sounded like it was gonna be pulled out of tip and he was wondering what we feel about that. And then he also, he has a 2012 pickup at 135,000 miles that he would like to have. And just basically, if you guys are interested, let him come in and talk about it, you know?
I was thinking about that pickup since he brought it up in February, March. Just like we did with the lawnmower, could we use local option sales tax to do that too? To be used in the upper part area of the county? I'm wondering if that would fit. Last I checked, since the ambulance didn't need nothing, county veterans almost at $200,000. So, don't know if the board's appetite, you know, could we purchase a pickup out of local option sales tax for application? Maybe something we need to look into. Anybody else?
Yes, from Sheriff Ryan, we have, he's requesting 80,000 budget amendment for purchase of a vehicle and up, updating.
This is on top of him, just got it?
Yes, I took it out of my current budget year, fiscal year budget. Keeps us on rotation.
Let it.
Well, I took it out of the current fiscal year that we're in.
Oh.
As a budget reduction.
Gotcha.
To keep us on pace for minimum once a year. The current one that's being replaced in the fleet's got 130,000 miles and nothing in this five-year budget to purchase anything to replace that one.
I do have a request too. I just didn't send it.
Okay, leave it there.
Okay.
I assume you did.
I said, okay. And this one was for the EMS and Joe, so he has this donation fund and he's saving for certain items, but he finds that he needs it to when he purchased something and he gets, he gets a grant in, he has to buy it and then the grant comes in. So he would like to increase that to the amount that's in the fund so he can use it for the grant purposes. And then we have, anything about this?
Um, he can only spend it, yeah, he can only spend it in that donation account. Remember, we just spent $8,000?
And he's gonna get five back.
He's gonna get five back. So I, where's our packet that Sheila just gave us? Somebody have it close by? Talking about the donations, we didn't allocate here this, that's last year's. Thank you. So it was a donation fund.
Yes, it deserves being our third show.
No. Donation. So he only added 7,000, 17,500.
And there's 23 in there.
And there's 23. So he just wants to add another to get up to the balance on the pool cash. So he has the right to spend if something comes up.
And then we have secondary roads and it was, um, this is for a maintenance project and it's 102,024 dollars and 26 cents.
And that's because I think it was spent. You know the whole thing about that?
So.
Elizabeth was involved in this, right?
Right, so it was made out for fiscal year 24, 25, but it had the wrong vendor and address on it, so it needed, it was already cleared for June 30th, but now it's gonna be paid.
Authority this year to spend.
Yeah, but he needs the authority to spend it this year.
Well, that was more of a cleanup of the works. Cause he added them last year's department funds.
And then what you have for generator?
Yeah.
Or not generator, but.
The cooling tower. I would put at least 150,000 in. Hopefully, we are going out for bits this afternoon for a cooler on that. Pending public hearing. Lisa, did you have anything?
I did. Can I speak my, okay. So according to the Iowa State Counties Association, a county supervisor's duty is to protect and preserve the right privileges and property of the county and its residents and to preserve and improve the peace, safety, health, welfare, comfort, and convenience of the county residents. As a board of supervisor member, yes, your responsibilities for the money, but it's much more than that. It is making decisions for residents of your county and being responsible for their well-being. It is to make our county a great one and not to break it down. When making cuts and changes, it is being responsible and researching and collaborating with departments to understand the positive and negative effects of these actions, not to make hasty decisions without researching them. Um, so environmental health piece of it, um, the revenue in 22, 23 was 60,000, I'll just round it, 784,000. In 23, 24, the revenue was 56,125 dollars. And last year, the fiscal year that we just got done with, the revenue was 71,660. So that is 15,533 dollars more than we have made in previous years. So we have done extra work. We brought in an extra $10,000 in grant money um, that other counties would have got, but they didn't use it, so we brought it to our county. And we've bettered the agency and we were rewarded by getting cut 29,686 dollars. So I am just having a hard time understanding the logic behind the decisions that are being made. 67% of this budget is for salaries and fringe and 27% is for well work. So when this small budget gets cut, services provided to your county get decreased because it's either salary and fringe or it's well work that we need to cut. So for environmental health, we're asking for 15,000 to 30,000 dollar budget amendment. And this would be for salaries to do work and the grant so that we can bring revenue back in, so.
Currently 30,000 of the grant that we would not like to utilize, correct?
Correct. That's an estimate, but yes.
So by utilizing more money isn't quite going to technically cost you guys, shouldn't cost you guys anything in the end.
Correct. Um, for the public health piece of it, public health, we laid off three staff members. We got no raises and that included me. We absorbed all of the duties of these great people laid off. These cuts caused cuts to homemaker services, which affected people who were on sliding scale, NEI 3A, low-income individuals, elderly, and special, special needs individuals in our county. So instead of there being five or more agencies that could come in in our county and care for the people who we can't care for anymore, there was one company according to Medicaid caseworkers that could come into our county and provide services to our clients. And I did report this during a department meeting, department head meeting. They are not showing up, kind of like, like you guys are talking about. They're not showing up to do visits. They're not calling to let them know they're not coming. Um, people are waiting for them. They're not rescheduling times to come. They're taking items from our clients' houses to sell and said that they would give them the money for it.
Can I stop here at there, please? I know I've heard this twice now. Have those people called the law enforcement to report those incidents?
They have not.
Well, that's where I would go first. If, if there's stuff going on on personal property, I think our sheriff would take care of that. Look into it. Got a call.
I advise them. I talked to the agency, but there's little I can do about it. I mean, I can advise them to talk to people and advise them to call the other agency. And that's, I mean, that's all I can do, so. Um, people are struggling to do daily tasks that you guys take for granted and they're being neglected. We all would do what we can in our power to keep our grandparents, parents, and our children safe. How would you feel if a family member was being neglected and treated like this? Would you be okay with that? People are paying their tax money expecting to be taken care of and expecting these services. Many questions, question, and I hear this, where are our taxes going? So in June, just looking at statistics, we did 36 less eight visits and 135 less homemaker visits. And that's roughly about $5,000 in revenue that we could have made. 80% of our public health budget is for salary, fringe, and health insurance. Um, and of course, we also need things like syringes and needles and gloves and stuff like that in order to do our job. So when we're cutting, we need those things, so we end up cutting salary and people because that's a huge part of our budget. So for, for public and home health, we're asking for a $100,000 budget amendment, which will include a 3% raise for the staff, which is in line with all of the other county departments who were allowed raises. We would like a part-time nurse and a full-time aide. These positions will bring in revenue and they will also be able to allow us to start back up homemaker services, um, to provide service for low-income elderly and special needs individuals.
Can I have your paperwork when you get done for your asking, so I can keep it?
Yeah, I can email you what we're asking.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yes, I'd like to speak too.
You have a lot of journey.
So with that 100,000 and I've been a lot of discussing with, with Lisa on it, with the one full-time, one part-time, we're still going to have roughly 250,000 less money than last fiscal year. And with that, we're still gonna have to prioritize the homemaker services. I mean, there's still certain things that they're not gonna be able to do, whether it be laundry or groceries, but at least just use Cal for instance, at least if, if Cal needs bathing or assistance getting dressed in the morning and the prior, they're gonna have to prioritize what they're doing. Um, and then with, with environmental health, uh, we got that extra money. So essentially, if we don't use that 30,000 that we cut in that state grant money, that's gonna go to another county. They're not gonna reduce the grant, they're just, they're gonna reallocate it to a different county that needs it. So I don't see a reason why not to utilize that here.
I think adding on to what you're saying, um, the homemaker services, we might not be able to do the, all the hours that people are asking for. But if, we know we're reliable, we're not, we know we're gonna show up and we're going to do a good work. So if we can give them something, it's more than they're getting now.
And Lisa has already done the forework of notifying, I believe, Medicaid and some other insurance agencies of decertifying those services, so she's got, if we start doing this, some of that stuff again, she's got a lot of paperwork that she has to do again, right?
Right, I'm willing to do that.
And you know, let's say we have 10 patients that need services, there's people that are calling, calling because they can't do certain things, they can't, they're only getting showered or bathed once a week. If we can say, hey, we got these 10 patients, we can allocate five hours a week to each of you, that's what you get. At least it's something.
I don't think people realize, you know, we have to care. I'm gonna try not to cry. Kyle takes care 24 hours a day. And that one hour of them coming in, knowing that they're coming, if one can't come, they make sure somebody else is there. I mean, that is so valuable to us. And I think, um, again, there's nowhere else in the county to get any help or in, in the area yet. So I think that's a, a big factor.
And I believe at the beginning, when this all started, Travis gave a, five providers a list when we were, and we only got one that they came into the county with, because everybody else is busy or don't want the county.
And one of them is your contract.
Yes, and plus, these homemakers to their patients is a trust factor too.
Yeah, I get all that. The king of vaccination. So we did a budget amendment for the well tests. Well water sewer permits. Uh, it looks like 30,025 and 15, so you know what you used total, Lisa? Like you got in 30,000?
Well, no, we got in around $60,000 from that grant.
There it is, 55,308.
It'll be more than that because I had to do the, um, fourth, you have to build by quarter. And so the next quarter, we're gonna get, well, after the fiscal year, because we had to do it after. So the check should be coming. So, um, that'll give you a more clear picture too, like, once we get that payment. And I can let you know what payment's coming.
For the next year, budget, we're gonna cut that down to 15,000.
That's correct.
No, I get the grant. I've been always a supporter of grant money.
But you told us, Bill, that we could always amend the budget.
Yeah.
But if we would have done this the first time and give us the grant money if we wanted to spend it, we wouldn't have to be coming for a budget amendment now.
But then you mentioned other expenditures. So you're gonna amend the budget to?
You mean for environmental health we're talking about? Um, so it would be to raise him up to 35 hours. Um, and that is roughly an extra $8,000 per year. So it's not gonna make or break the bank, I would hope. Um, so that will allow him to do the services.
Plus we just, and then we just renew a contract with Mitchell County. Um, if Dave Paulus will play to take over too.
We do have a 2080 agreement with Mitchell County and we're working on one with Howard County, which we've worked with them in the past. That if we would do services for them, like if there was a conflict of interest, if someone had a baby, something like that, those examples that we've used in the past, we will go up and do their services. And actually, it covers his whole cost, his mileage, plus a little bit extra, so.
We did add a little bit, that was a, I mean, what I did discuss with Lisa to add money under the hourly rate because it takes somebody time to mail that bill and takes the auditor time to receive that bill and pay it. So that's, there's a dollar value to that, so she did raise it a little bit.
So we do get $40 per hour plus mileage for that.
If they did this amendment, do you know if the two people you're speaking of would be willing to come back?
For the public health, I do not know, and I was not gonna reach out to them and get their hopes up.
Yeah, I agree. I just wanted to kind of be your friend.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I hope so because they were very good staff. But I would definitely reach out to them.
I think, I think they were asking for a full-time aide and a part-time aide.
Correct.
So you're saving on that, unless we put the nurse on 30 hours for health insurance, but you're saving all the other fringe benefits on that nurse, like vacation. And we paid out also for environmental health due to so many hours that maybe we wouldn't have had to due to the change of status.
Has the board health approved any budget amendment?
They, yes. So, um, they approved the position kind of thing. It was a consensus at our last meeting on Friday. They were in agreeance with the full-time aide and part-time, um, yep. And environmental health to move him back up to full-time.
At 35, you're at four.
Yes, right.
Pending the public hearing and the budget amendment, right? Those are, I mean, did that, do they act on going out to hire somebody with the current budget?
No, I don't have enough money. No, I don't have enough money in there, so I've just, yeah, so we were just going to get the consensus, like, for you to give me props.
And delay adjustments for all the employees of that department and plus a five minute.
All you can do is give the numbers to Sheila and see what all equals, compile all the requests that have came in so far and. Bring it back in the next couple of weeks, I think we're healthy enough, verify, and we'll see if we can do this.
We're not, I don't feel like we're asking for the moon, if we got to count three fifty, we're asking for a hundred back. Based on circumstances and the current state of the county budget. Now, had the budget been in worse shape than it's expected, I don't know if we could come up here and ask the same question.
If you also look at it, we, I mean, revenue will come back from it. It's not like we're hiring people who are gonna bring in no revenue. Revenue will come back and you're helping people, you're helping them stay safe and stay in their home. So I think those two factors are.
And they pay taxes too, when Lisa says that everybody pays taxes, so everybody deserves services. I need it.
I just wanna clarify, you mentioned five thousand dollar revenue because of the loss of employment in June. Is that an average number? If you could take that times twelve?
It is an average number.
It's an average of what? Do you feel that was lost revenue?
Correct.
So then, if you do the math, just numbers got here, five thousand and twelve is sixty thousand, so can't guarantee that you're bringing sixty thousand if you brought those two back?
I would say it would be very, well, it should be more because that, that sixty thousand's only for the eight, just for the eight.
That's not the nurse.
Any other requests? No, are you guys done?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah.
Is the treasurer here? So the treasurer met with me this, so eleven-thirty-ish. Maybe he's probably watching, but hopefully I can speak for himself. No, that's fine. Um, so he's seeing some issues with the down staff too, that he didn't figure any overtime in for salaries. Remember, they're only working thirty-five hours. If he needs to pay somebody to work forty hours, that was not figured in his salaries for his clerks or deputies. So, I'd be willing to look at that number and see if he could add some more for people to work up to and not have to use comp time to work more hours. So don't you think he described it? So just think about that too, guys, of the treasures, seeing if he can add more to his salary line items so that he can make his staff work extra hours if needed.
I've got a question on that. Your deputies are salaried what it is, right?
They are, Joan, and Sheila, I, I know we're gonna go with this, um.
It was just to be the clerical, right, to go to, but are you guys thinking about going to forty hours yet? For the whole courthouse?
We brought that up in February, March, we have not had that discussion yet. I'll go back. So you, Matt, I'm bringing you into this, I'm sorry, about adding more salary line items to your said staff so they could work from thirty-five to forty hours. Would you pay, and Sheila, you can, I don't know about recorder, she's watching, but how do they pay their deputies?
So, um, my understanding here is that they take their unit hourly and they work up to the forty hours, you know, they're paid for that. If they work any, from thirty-five to forty, they get paid the unit, the salary's divided by the, what is it?
Hourly rate.
Hourly rate. But the salary's by how many hours for the clerks?
Yeah, I don't know, we rely on some comp time, but I've questioned it and no one really seems to have any to play, you know, why the five-hour gap, I'm like, if she's paid salary, like.
Why are you paying anything more than over thirty-five? Let me jump in here because I was part of this conversation two years ago, it was more than a conversation, it was a much longer process.
Why don't I get Donna too? Hey Donna, do you want to come in here for six hours?
Compared to the salary.
What? They get eighty percent now. The deputies, if they weren't wanting thirty-five dollars, how do we pay them if we don't use comp time? We pay them and they go into a different line item, right?
It's hourly rate, so, so there are, there are very few technically salaried people in this county. Um, we passed the resolution, we've done it for the last three years now. I think the five of you, five elected officials, Ray, um, you know, there are very few people who are truly salaried and are not on a time clock. The, the deputies are not technically salaried because they do have a time clock, they do have vacation, they do accrue those other time issues. So my knowledge was, when we figured their wage, it was whatever eight percent a deputy or whatever it might be, divided by the fifty-two, divided by thirty-five hours, and they got an hourly rate computed over the time periods throughout the year, is that right?
Yeah.
So it's not technically salaried because they are marking their hours and they are getting time compensation and sick time, whereas mature salaried persons, myself included, all you guys, do not have those restrictions or those.
The state law says they can't make more than eighty-five percent.
Correct.
And then, but it's not technically overtime till after forty hours. So we, once we got that unit, from thirty-six to forty, they get paid that unit.
They get the rate of their wage divided by the thirty-five times the two. So if they're gonna work five extra hours a week, the question's gonna become, are they gonna get the extra money? At that rate, or are you gonna say, hey, you're making eighty percent, that includes your forty hours until you're thirty-five hours? That's what I'm going with that. Right?
Yeah.
That's what I'm doing though, ratings.
For thirty-four, for thirty-five, an hourly rate based upon whatever percentage of the day is how it is how it's worked. It's an hourly rate based upon the, or the electric official.
We rely on some comp time, I mean, maybe like an hour a month, so. That was previously, like, with someone on leave right now and everything. Yeah, we're just trying to catch up with, uh, titling, online titles that come in from the dealership, so that's just, they can get a lot of that done when they come in half an hour, they're leaving, up in a couple days a week, so it's not anything major, but.
So I guess brought it up, um, no departments asked for a number yet, just wondering if they should add it to a request for a budget amendment. If those three, I'd say if three departments wanna work extra hours up to forty. I mean, would you land, would you add a line item for overtime then too? Since you don't have one?
Well, I, yeah, let's go ahead.
Why is it set at thirty-five hours instead of forty? That's before my time.
It always has been that. Because at the courthouse, even, even before the assessor's office was before, they, they were thirty-five hours till they decided they want more money and that, so they brought one to the forty hours. The clerk for court was also the thirty-five hours, secondary bill was always forty hours.
Doesn't make sense to have deputies if they're running forty hours at eighty percent of their electric.
But that's, that's an HR issue, you either have to talk to them.
I think it's a handbook change, you can make all full-time people working four hour, forty hour work gigs.
It's the same speed as a homemaker's, a homemaker's works thirty-five hours too.
The reason we do that, though, is the hours vary so much week by week. Sometimes they're working forty, sometimes thirty-five, depending on how many patients and, and things like that, is why it's thirty-five.
And environmental health is the same way.
But again, it's not overtime unless you go over at forty.
And the reason you would make them work forty hours is, uh, less staff, and that can get, I think it's two hundred sixty hours a year that they're working less than a forty-hour work week.
In my mind, well, you used to avoid me for the election time.
So anyway, anybody else, Sheila, that I've missed in discussions last week? I think we're top law for budget amendment.
No, I haven't got mine ready, but I'll come up with mine. Maybe next week?
Yeah, we'll see. Anybody else? Budget amendment takes time, um, probably up to four weeks to um, discuss the numbers, get it to publication, and then to have a public hearing on it, so. That's all I can say at this time. We'll take all of those discussions under advisement and see where we, uh, publish the public hearing.
So whether you know that timeframe, so whether we can get those.
Well, we gotta see the numbers first.
Or we can also just see, if, if it does pass, then we can start the hiring process.
Yeah, if this isn't ending fund balance of two hundred fifty thousand, Romans is, uh, he's restricted, so chauffeur would be eighty thousand. Air conditioner would be a hundred and fifty at the max, I mean, this budget amendment could take, anybody have a guess? I'm just gonna throw
If we were at.
Half a million dollars out of GB.
What about you? I'm just saying, well, how much do you have in your capital projects fund? And what's that, does it aim for? I'm just asking.
Right now, it's major equipment, uh, capital project, city.
Would that be a possibility for your air conditioning?
It, it could be.
And maybe you have the expenditure for that, it depends on what your department is.
Has the ending fund balance been figured out yet? Like, we can get a copy of that? The official ending fund balance?
Per department, you have those done, but you have, yeah, per.
Like, we have our full cash, that's ending.
Well, we wanted to break down per department, how much each one gave back compared to how much.
Well, I need to know about the expenditures, how much everybody gave back with the department.
I didn't get a copy, I, you know, it was a working document that.
Well, the expenditures I did, you said about.
When not all the departments are around, they're all sold.
Right.
Which does affect some of its balances too.
Right, so I thought everybody was more concerned with GB and GS, that's why I focused on them.
They're all the revenue, by that. You have that part done?
No, not that I do, no.
Okay.
Well, we need the final numbers, I'd also like to see as the department head went through the budget process, what are anticipated surplus or deficit? Um, because that was what got us, this whole conversation started last spring, was we were checking the deficits. So I think it'd be pertinent to go back now and look and say, now that the budget's set for this fiscal year, are we considering the amendment? Let's put all our anticipated revenues on there and all our anticipated expenses, department, department, add them all and figure out where we're at. Um, because if we're directing a five hundred thousand dollar deficit again, we're gonna have this conversation in March or February again.
We will.
But if we're, if we're gonna be even, or we think we're gonna be surplus again, then perhaps we look at things a different light. But I, I haven't heard that one yet, um, so I think that's an important number to know before we get too far down the road. That's just my two cents as a department.
Can I agree, can I agree with that? Because this is the second time that you had excess money. I believe the first time was twenty-four, twenty-five, and now we're going to the second year of this excess.
But that's also a better job of the department, it has to give us a little bit closer revenue. I'm not picking on the treasurer, but did you expect a three hundred thousand plus interest better than what you had on paper?
No, I mean, that's like three times more than we had two years ago.
Exactly, so I guess to balance the budget, we, we have to sharpen our pencil too for revenues.
What if they drop interest rates one percent, which they won't, if they do tomorrow? Or if we spend a million dollars, we may not make as much interest.
Exactly.
Because.
And a lot of problems.
When the money's spent during the year too, if there's a lot of this spending, where you're.
Yeah, so that, that revenue one's hard to figure, but that helps see if the fund balance becomes in better. Right, and I'm not faulting Sheila at this hall, so I make sure I'm clear. I'm not faulting anybody. I'm not saying that, that, that what you feel like, I'm throwing stones at you. Um, you know, my general comment is, is this should be something that you do every July or every August, is you pull together where you're currently projecting and figure out how realistic it is and what that number is. Um, as opposed to doing it in February, March, comparing to the past, because we don't have enough money to get to that year.
Anyone who had the funds anymore either, right? Because that, that was a great majority of your interest, right?
That stays in that restricted fund.
But that's pretty much gone.
Yeah, seven thousand bucks there, yes. All right, anything else on the budget amendment? She said Felicia could get the numbers to Sheila and whoever else, Matt, if you had something?
Well, where are you on the, I agree. Right now, we have a whole, I just looked back at last year, we're basically the same money we had last year, but as far as, you know, interest rate figuring and everything, so hopefully it can stay on track.
All right, thank you all. Um, moving on to the one forty-five, is Denny out there?
You're up, boss.
Oh, outstanding, how about you? Not my shirt, yeah, exactly, about three or four times. All right. I'll sit a little bit later, take my water bottle.
All right, we have two sixteen, discussed data processing processes and procedures. Just to give a background of where we were and potentially where we could go. So on January twenty-first of two thousand nineteen, the board passed a policy called Chico's County Data Processing Department Policies and Procedures. Talking with Denny, that this is kind of very outdated, and some of the stuff today is not, I guess, but it's being handled this way.
Yeah.
So then we looked into, uh, the auditor's office and myself last week looked into how we can be better and, and maybe potentially more efficient. So currently, we have a twenty-two FX, twenty-twenty FX contract with Denny for a service block of three hundred hours. My concern is which said departments can use that service block. And the other department that have a service block, correct me if I'm wrong, Denny, is the EMS through our twenty-eight E with EMS, so Joel Knudsen uses you for a block of hours?
Not anymore. He decided not to continue that service block, he doesn't think he's gonna use ten hours in a year.
Did not know that until today, thank you.
It just happened as of July first, so.
Did not know that, sorry for that.
Oh, that's all right.
So the, I guess the assessor has a service block with you. He has a conference board, he has his own levy rate, his own funding mechanism. And then the election officer, which is Sheila, she has a service block of so many hours that's gone to.
Data processing?
No, no, the election has never had a service block, you guys have never opted for that. Yeah, it's just built separately.
Yeah, but you bill it me or by you.
Yes, yes, there's been service.
So, okay, sorry, no contract then, but it's built separately.
Yeah, whatever he does for election.
Yep.
So the only one that has a service block is the county under GB. And the.
Assessor.
Assessor. So trying to be more efficient and trying to make these said departments show a true picture of what they actually use for the taxpayers of this county, when we get state wall changes, I think the service block is breached. I think it's internal that we start building those said departments. Like EMA, like, because how this got brought up is you submitted a claim for hardware.
Yeah, it was a ten-dollar, like, after, but yeah.
But it was coded.
Right, okay, right.
For EMA. So why should the county GB funds pay for, uh, EMA commission?
Well, it wasn't open for EMA to us.
Correct, correct. No, I get that, I get that.
And the reason I would do all of that, like, hardware through data processing, especially tiny hardware, is that if we need it, or Jeff didn't need it anymore, we don't just have to throw it away.
I'm not making more work for you guys, because I appreciate what you guys do, I have an internal policy here is so we can build back in June. So, so we, we get your service block hours where you provide a service, right? The work done, we could easily code that to secondary rooms, for so many hours.
Yes.
Code it to Jeff for so many hours. Um, code it to Joel for so many hours just so we know that we get a reimbursement. We do that now for workers' comp, we do that now for, uh.
Right, and it just doesn't take so much money, I'd give you that.
And that would make things a lot simpler, I mean, if everybody could use the general service block and you guys just fill it out afterwards, that would save money and make it more efficient.
But that's exactly where I wanna see it.
Because if somebody gets, like, there's some hours that we can use on the service block this year.
Yep.
All right, um, let's say Jeff gets a thirty-hour service block and he ends up not using nine of it or fifteen of it or something like that, or as if he took it out of the general. or fifteen of it or something like that, or as if he took it out of the general service block and then at the end of June, you just bill it, say, hey Jeff, you used nineteen this year, you're using forty two this year, we wouldn't be out.
Yep, and and where we learned, where I learned this from is when we were a twenty eighty engineer with Floyd County. Floyd County would bill us for fifty percent of full benefits, uh but then we would have to pay for, Floyd County would charge secondary roads for their HR unit negotiator. So why can't we do that same method here by charging those said departments own levy rates or restricted funds? In June, if we do with workers' comp, you know.
Makes more sense.
Than having five separate contracts. We don't wanna make this more work.
No, and it's also cheaper for the county.
Exactly. So then moving forward on equipment then, uh computers, monitors, hardware, do you want that to stay with your department?
I would very much like it to stay with data processing, that way I don't have to incur more hours off the service block every time I would have to run. Like, if I build something directly to Jeff, because I built him a beast of a computer, and then he didn't use that after like two, three years because he had to do something else, I could take that computer and repurpose it somewhere else in the county, and I wouldn't have to have me and Jeff in here and incur more hours off the service block for me and come before you guys to approve the purchase and everything like that and the transfer, you know what I'm saying?
My only thing though is, it's a good idea, but Jeff knows we're, some of us maybe staying on, he's he's not even a county employee, right Jeff? Why should Jeff basically be paying for all his.
I know.
Computers, I understand the efficiency of getting them back to the county, uh but.
I get where you guys are coming from here, you can't really do that with nine one one, EMA, EMA, all that stuff in the assessor's office. I just can't take them out of there for whatever reason, because like you say, it's a separate org, separate fund, that kind of.
I mean, could you take, I mean, I don't know if you do it, but you take an assessor's Ray's computer and gives it back to the board of supervisors. And and that's why I think with Jeff, you can't do that either because of the funding mechanism.
I'm just saying, I would like it.
So just to clarify, Jeff's hours are gonna come off the contract, but his hardware is going to be built separately? To his department, is that what you're gonna do?
If we're gonna build it into the year, it'd be pretty much the same one, I mean, I'm still paying for those hours that I use. I don't know what's the point.
That's it.
I think to have the, for me, whenever you take some hardware for Jeff, just bill him.
Right, right, right.
But the service contract, you know, as long as you tell me who was there or where you at, then we could break it down for you.
I mean, would that be the same way with the assessor's office, or do you keep your own?
We would keep our own body, because we all accept tax levying body. But the secondary.
I don't know, I I know Renee's there, sorry.
I don't want to bill in June for how, I mean, I wanna know what it's gonna be ahead of time.
Every month, every month you want to be billed?
Yeah. Because sometimes we will.
So we can bill it every month.
Yeah.
You're gonna give us your.
Sometimes we go once and we all see Denny, and then all of a sudden, it's like bang, 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 bang.
Yeah.
Because like workers' comp, yeah, we pay it in June, but I know what it is, my estimate, so I can have an idea.
So yeah, you won't know this until June, that'd be a big surprise.
Pardon me?
You won't know data process until, you want it to be billed monthly.
Yeah.
I can send a report monthly, if that's fine, if that's what you want.
Anybody else have concerns that we were going with this? I just thought we needed to clean it up since it is July.
So what about, so right, you're separate tax levy, so what about EMS and nine one one, anything else, any place else?
So that's with EMS, right? So EMS has a twenty eighty, I I guess it's up to the board, we control that twenty eighty, right Dave? Should fifty one general service pay for EMS computers and software? And I'd say no, because we are trying to show a true picture of that service.
Yep.
Doesn't he have a line in his budget for that?
He does.
Yeah, so he should be paying out his own budget.
But right now, it's all being paid out of that process budget.
No, not for EMS.
No, all their hardware is free out of.
So you, what's it?
It's just a service contract.
The service contract.
No.
No.
Well, they have their own.
No, they're not.
He shows not to renew it, so now whenever he incurs labor, it will be billed to him separately on an invoice.
Along with the servicing too?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, sorry, I misunderstood that.
Me too.
That's what the services are and the hardware both.
Yes.
Yes, he pays for everything.
Yes.
Services and hardware on your, probably.
Yes.
So we don't have to.
I write a check to you.
We don't have to worry about it.
No.
And then that's.
Same with Ray, Ray does the great, that's our process.
And that's what you're gonna do with.
We'll all make sure.
With secondary.
Tax software.
With secondary.
Tyler. Uh any, anything with Tyler, tax software.
That's.
That's taking care of that cap.
Right.
And we don't contribute to that.
So then, what about secondary roads?
What about, I guess, what's changing?
Yeah, what do we wanna do?
So that's a separate fund and it doesn't, you know, not everybody keeps into just.
I think we get the bill from you and then we will.
I'm not playing, I know, what about hardware?
About what?
Hardware.
Is there stuff separate?
I would have to say yes, um just because they don't use any GB GS funds. They're like a, they're like the assessor, they have their own levy, they have their own budget.
So their labor can go all the contact, but you want their hardware billed separately to them?
I would say so.
So if that's the way we're gonna do this now with four or five different departments, what about all the hardware that we've built and put in in the last two or three years that's all been built to data processing?
I would say we can't, we can't.
Do we need to inventory this all separately now, so that he knows that all of that is his department's?
The older stuff that I paid four hundred to data processing budget, this is data processing property, and then going forward. Yeah, you'd have to tag it going forward, say this is secondary road property, this is data processing. So that way, at least I would know what I can take out of there and what I can't.
And keep in mind, having him do that is gonna use more hours on the contract.
Yeah, I know that. I think you would leave when it's already there, that, yeah, what's done is done, come to the app, yeah. Just to move forward. But I am gonna have to go back and tag it, just so I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that way, whatever inventory list that I keep, I know what is data processing wants, that is.
Why is the assessor's office a separate taxing board, right, yours independently, but EMA nine one one, separate taxing board is running taxes to the county then? Someone's gonna ask that.
So that order, I can, all right.
We have your own separate revenue stream, kind of one does. Not one does. Not even, it might get some from this.
And other necessary if they need to. If we don't give enough someday, we're gonna have to figure it out, right, I mean.
So are you gonna get to a point then, as department head, I'll ask this question, where I'm gonna be billed for my own computer and printer and copier and that kind of stuff? Or where we're gonna see a true picture of what my office runs, as opposed to I go through two things of paper, but the office next to me goes through two hundred things of paper?
Yeah.
Then then Denny reflects a two hundred thousand dollar expense and mine's two thousand, and the office next door's is twenty thousand?
We still have thirty percent.
I don't really care, I care what you say. I'm just saying, if that's where you're going, is to have a more clear picture, then.
I think the clearer picture should be the GB fund, right? You're under the GB fund.
Yeah.
Um Jeff is not, Ray's not, and secondary roads are not.
That's fair. That's the first time I ever knew that about secondary roads.
Yeah, I got an email last night from somebody asking the same question, can they do work for county building? And most counties looking into that, just because they are only supposed to take care of secondary road system. They're not supposed to help engineer a courthouse, they're not supposed to help engineer a.
So the engineers under the general fund?
No.
No, they're not either. So.
So should the engineer equipment also be billed to them, separating them?
I thought you said yes.
I I I said yes, I mean, just because they are not general basic funds.
So you guys got a consensus, that the secondary roads have asked a question.
Equipment.
The equipment and is gonna be built from direct?
Yes, that's what I understood.
And EMS is gonna have the service and the hardware, the service contract and the hardware, I mean, whatever services they use.
Yeah, that's what they do.
Yes, the assessor is not changing. EMA and secondary road are gonna be a part of our service contract, and we bill them, is that what we're doing, or what did you guys decide?
That's what's kind of thought for discussion.
That's up for discussion, just because to me, we get the hour sheet, why don't we just bill them?
We can bill them, we do that with insurance too.
Okay.
But you guys could also bill them direct too.
Good.
I mean, why take another step?
Because, okay, so wait.
If you're gonna do that, then there's no reason to have a general three hundred hour contract.
Right.
If you're gonna make every department have their own hours, then every department should have their own contract.
Yeah.
Because you're never gonna use three hundred hours otherwise.
And the only, where you run into a problem there, so like if the county buys four hundred hours, then you save four thousand dollars for accounting. That's a a hundred dollars for every ten hours that you buy. Now, if every department has their own service block contract, there's absolutely no way for me to prognosticate how many hours they're going to use in the course of the year. So if I sell them a thirty hour, if I sell him a thirty hour contract and he only uses ten, he doesn't get those twenty hours back. So he's out that money. So that's why we're saying that it would almost be better to have the general service block contract and then either monthly or at the end of the year, bill them out, okay? Yeah, that makes, that makes sense, yeah, okay. Right, you share all the hours amongst the county.
That's what I think, we share the hours.
But Renee was in here, so she wants her.
Yeah, she wants monthly.
I consider it monthly, that's not a big issue, that's not that big of a deal.
Anything else on the policy that would need to be changed about?
Oh, boy.
You guys had a copy of that, if I can type it in sometime? Okay.
So just to clarify, I did not understand on the engineer. The engineer is gonna stay on a contract for labor, but their hardware also needs to be billed to their.
That's what I was done, yeah, hardware, yes, contract was stated.
So the only ones staying on data processing are auditor, treasurer, and.
And forebider, sheriff's.
And public health and sheriff's station.
And the board.
And the board, okay.
And so you.
And the.
Treasurer. And the DA, yeah, Virginia, yeah, out there, yeah.
Uh there's certain things uh that I did away with a long time ago, like the computer equipment portion of this, where the data processing manager, who at the time was this Rip and Ray, said, well, require an estimate prior to purchase, well, since I'm the data processor and also twenty twenty FX is the company quoting that seems silly and wasteful hours. So I just sent over an invoice because I kind of proved it on my end as to what we need. Does that make sense? So that we just eliminate that estimate portion and I'll I'll rewrite this too, but I didn't want to before it came in here today and make sure that we were all clear. And I have not been getting the printer and your toner cartridges, I've just been leaving that out to the departments and basically the courthouse, and Sheila, you tell me if I'm wrong, but when you guys order like a printer and toner for the courthouse, does everybody just kinda share that, the like paper?
Yeah.
Everybody shares that?
Well, we, you know, we all have different printers, so we, like, when I run low, when Randy comes here, you give it to a merger, I think that's really.
And you kinda code that under each department?
No, we put it under data.
Yeah, okay, and that's just hardware.
If they get toner, then they code it under, you know, data processing too.
Okay, and that's fine, and the paper does.
Yeah, we do, yeah, we do a bid and then we get the paper and it goes under.
So is that the same?
Is that all the general services though?
Uh services or supplies, I think, something like that?
Yeah.
So what about public health, do they all, when they order paper, toner? I always thought that that should be under data processing, supplies and stuff like that.
I think that, some of that stuff, I forget.
Okay.
Is public health paper one hundred eighty plus?
And I have not been.
Yeah, the officer.
Okay, that's what I thought. So as far as doing the HIPAA thing right there, committee comprised of data processing managers, county auditor, county attorney, county public health administrator, and veterans administrator. As far as the HIPAA thing, I haven't done anything with that, so, and I've never been asked to in the longest time. I don't know about any other department head, but that should probably be rewritten as well.
Ray, what did you find out about that HIPAA? Many years ago, we had. Yeah.
I was the compliance officer.
Yeah, but I thought since we have a whole number of staff.
I had those two investigations I had to do.
Correct.
And I worked with Homeland or with.
Homeland.
Homeland on that as well, plus we had a uh a compliance group.
Yeah.
Compliance group, um that would also provide a service and and some annual training.
Yeah, I can visit, we haven't done that for you.
But I think, if I recall, we did discuss that, uh we did one day with Mike Galloway, about whether we really need one here within the courthouse versus really where belongs with public health.
Correct, I know we did some more research and they said he didn't need anybody in the county. Except for public health.
Right.
Because none of our employees' health records are even here, they're without IGP.
Yeah, and what health records are, each office really collecting of the public, you know, uh other than public health. Exception is, we are, because of the disabled veterans home state tax credit, sometimes those forms and they they submit a uh a summary of their health record that qualifies for that credit. That's all kept in the lock key in my office, so.
So if you're gonna make some changes, Denny, and get it back to us?
Yeah, I will.
I I would say delete the whole HIPAA thing.
Yeah, there's a couple things down at the bottom, never take back after replacing, everything like that, that's not even gonna affect anyone, so I'll just rewrite this up and it's already been backed up like three different ways, so.
And also the corporate people who buy all the property.
Yeah.
For our office.
For for the assessor's office, right?
Anything else you guys need to answer? I was just trying to clean up the policy, clean up.
Yeah.
The.
You guys have any questions?
Uh so also in June, then, uh we purchased four what what are called mini PCs. One under the treasurer's office, the custodian, the sheriff's office, and one was EMA. Now, we billed that to data processing and just wrote down there that one of them was for EMA. Uh are you guys gonna move that back out of data and put it over to Jeff then, or?
When did you bill it?
June.
June twelfth?
Working, just leave it right.
Yeah.
Just gonna leave that?
Just going forward.
Well.
Okay.
Here my other question, so now all hardware for the engineer's office?
Is it still be built to them?
Okay, well, then that brings up the projector PC that I originally billed out of data processing budget back in June, which is a beast of a computer, and and I did not know that you had TVs over there, so we're just gonna put in a small PC, a Mini PC over there. That's EMA Mini PC, but this projector PC, I was instead going to put in the engineer's office for Romy's computer. But I already billed that out of data processing. I wanna put it in, but so should I just put it into the engineer's office and mark it down as a data processing computer?
It's a good question, I don't.
Sorry to bring it up.
No, I know, you asked me last week about it. So do you reuse a lot of parts for other stuff?
No, I don't, but if somebody, for whatever reason, needs a newer computer or a much more robust computer, whatever, then I will take that middle of the road computer and repurpose it in another department. In in Romy's case, um I'm probably not gonna be, if I put this computer in there, that's probably never going to be repurposed anywhere else because I can't think of any other department other than the sheriff's station that might have a purpose for it, or EMA, which I can't transfer between the engineer's office and EMA apparently, so. So I don't know if you would have uh engineer's office pay out of their budget to the data processing budget for that computer or?
That was last year's.
Yeah, that was last year's fiscal.
I forgot last year.
Okay.
Last year's.
All right, so I'll just put it in there and we'll put the later hours on the data processing.
I think the goal, the goal of this today was trying to show that true picture of GB, RSB, assessor, EMA nine one
Yep.
As a true picture of doing business.
Yeah, that's pretty much.
If you guys don't agree with me, jump in, but I I think we've been hearing the last year or two about true pictures of a county agency. Anybody have anything else? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm Matt Heisbrand. Um, semi annual report that you sent out?
Would you go?
Any other questions?
Like I said, pretty much have a similar, at least dollar-wise, uh, pretty similar ending. Balance for right around thirteen billion last year also.
Is there a motion to approve the semi annual report dated June thirtieth of twenty five? Motion by Steve Segway Scott to approve the semi annual report with the treasurer's office dated June thirteenth, two thousand twenty five. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, and re-approve motion carried. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Assessor Ray Amel discussed the proposed Chickasaw County ordinance due one dash eight. Um, that number is utilities, scale, solar installations. So just to be fair, we have not passed an ordinance yet. That number is the next number for the draft. Ray, you sent out...
Oh, we'll take that one. I'll get this up.
Everybody should have received the copy.
Yeah, Dave, have you seen the copy or made changes?
I've smarted, so.
So David is still working on it.
I do have a copy here if you want, but, uh, all the changes highlighted in yellow.
Oh, you got one for your choice?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, I went ahead and made copies.
Yeah, you have my copies, so don't worry about it, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have yours one copy? Copy?
So you made some changes to what we talked about two weeks ago?
Yes, sir. Talked about setbacks, ground cover. Noise is in there. Look at the setbacks. Setbacks are on the third page. Under section four, site and structure departments. Want to take a look at that? That part is somewhat primary concern you had.
So one of my questions last week, you put the definition of utility, source, scale, solar energy in there. I guess one of my comments would be, being personalized, that somewhere should be in here if that includes that definition that excludes solar energy that is used for personal use. If that's something that what they want, it's in there, or is he saying that?
That's what I'm planning, so.
Section three.
Those just...
Should not.
Shall not prohibit a property from making excess power available for net metering. And that distributed solar system should be an accessory used to access the, which is what we're talking about.
So section three, you gotta add it as a new section?
Yes.
So that means this has nothing to do with residential, putting it on a shed or a house?
Or, or even on a landmine.
Even on a landmine?
Yep.
They can still sell their array back to a power company?
Yeah. The excess, yeah.
So if I build, no, it's not right. So if I build one of these on my farm and I use one one thousandth of the power for mine, I'm excluded from this ordinance?
I would assume so, because we don't...
Is that what we want?
Well, we have a lot of those up already, right? That are sold back to a power company. I think this is mainly for a solar farm.
This is...
Not for personal use.
Utility scales, solar systems. In which are being built specifically for that purpose. Because, uh, they are...
Sure.
Yes, they are, because they are essentially assessed property. I cannot, I do not assess these. Okay, those are assessed by the state of Iowa. They have to report their, their energy that they produce and the energy that they sell out on the grid. They have to report that to the Department of Revenue and Finance, who in turn then places a value on that on a profile basis of that grid allocation, also as well as the size of that location.
So what's the trigger for the classification in your bones? Is it the resale of the power? Or what's the trigger for it?
That has yet to be defined by the state. Okay, and that's something I'm not gonna go...
No, I understand, I guess, I'm just, I'm reading way over comprehensive like all of them. It's like, I agree, it's a lot, it's still a problem, it's like you said. I guess that's my question.
If I, if I only use one one thousandth of the other...
The one I drive by, I have a little hacky upstairs, it says, hey, the manager comes here and stays here every Wednesday night to make sure we're in compliance and use one one thousandth of the power. In that case, that would be essentially assessed. Okay? Because, uh, you do not have something there for personal use other than even the, the sole purpose of that accessory unit, that shed or building that that manager is sitting in, is for that solar system, for that utility plan. But if you ran it underground and crossed the, the fence line to the neighboring farmer and said the farmer's an owner of part of this thing, then all of a sudden, oh, it's not about it. That's where I'm kidding. I just, if the, if the state hasn't able to draw that line, I don't know how we're gonna be able to, but that, that's my fear as the attorney sitting in the room is someone's gonna come up and play games with this and say, hey, I can find a way around what we're trying to address.
That has yet to be addressed and defined by anybody.
Do we have any, I don't know the name of it, but on the juror book blacked out, do we have any of these that they sell solely to utility?
Players.
Yeah. And you don't assess that?
That's simply assessed by the state. I have to report when they're built, I have to report to the state, you know what they have there. And that's as far as it goes.
You guys wanna move forward with the foreheads? You guys want to see any changes? Dave, are you okay with it? Are you gonna take some time, look it over?
I'll have to look it through this week. I guess that's my big concern is, is the paper, it's the... Here, like, here, people are gonna freak out and think we're ready enough to put them up on there, or cheat shit by the farm. Yeah, no, that's not the intent, I just wanna make sure it's crystal clear in here. That's not what we're trying to make it work.
It's just... You're at the...
I got that.
Yep.
Yeah. Because you guys all know our information, it's right, unless we make sure we're crystal clear with that.
I can't, it says nothing.
Well, we're doing what we're not doing, and that's the whole purpose of section three.
Right. And that's why it's set way down specifically for...
Do we want another sentence in there that says this ordinance does not pertain to, uh... Most people don't know what net metering is.
Yes. Again, I would add a line, it's something like, this ordinance does not, uh, does not affect, uh, power that is used exclusively for personal use on that property.
And that means maybe we can add that to section round here, right, purpose.
I just think it'd be more clear if you make that. More people are gonna knock that around.
So I'll ask you then, put that verbiage together to add to section one.
Because I believe, if I'm right, there's some power companies that don't even pay you for net metering.
Yeah.
Just because they don't want to. They don't want that extra power on the grid. If you build a standalone... Because you brought up about the DC battery banks.
Yeah.
Those are the next thing coming out.
That is the next thing coming up, and I believe over by Homeland Energy, we've already got the pads in, the lines ran, I think that's what that's gonna be used for, is battery, battery banks.
Yep. So.
And the state, we asked the state here about three months ago to give that a listen about, about those battery banks. Is that gonna be centrally assessed or hopefully assessed? But not.
But not. Because there are big ones being built south in bigger Lynn County, Johnson Counties.
Oh, they're, yeah.
They're coming.
They're coming.
Anybody else have any changes? Let Dave look through it, make some changes, get it back to us?
Yeah, just we go through it.
It's, it's come a long ways from last week's.
What about just re, we got a public hearing, we can wait the second and third?
Can, yeah, but I, I would have at least one public hearing. I mean, I would have a couple of ones for this, just in case, but I think if we make the word out...
Correct.
We have first public hearing, that what we're trying to address, what we're not, to address. That'll help, I would think, if we define any of these that we're not. Like, we're coming after their panels on their garage, ceiling of their house.
And like, you did highlight in the title that this is for the unincorporated areas of Chickasaw County. If there's nothing else on that, stay true.
Yeah.
Take a little recess.
Yeah, we'll take a little recess.
And you want us back?
If I know two, three minutes, say so.
Thank you.
I think that's the model they're gonna follow where some company might come and say, hey, we'll offer this, here what we're gonna teach people, and we'll charge people a hundred bucks or fifty bucks to take this course on, and I think that's where it's gonna go eventually. But it's not there yet, it's unclear as to where it's gonna go. But the bottom line is, we need to make sure we're compliant, and I think my office volunteered to assist with that, to keep track of it, Michelle and I will, um, she will, in my office, in the office at the active certificates. Once you're completed, then I'll check and see the two law and library board members. But like I said, it's not gonna be live, I have to do it. But let me know, she'll give me Ken the names of those two people, and we'll make sure. The safest way to deal with this, like this covenant, is to advise, I would advise, every elected board and commission to just go ahead and do the training once it becomes available, especially if it's on demand. So if it becomes on demand, we can get it anytime, first till August, whenever they get the program, the hour-long program put together, I would advise all boards and commissions, could you guys, take an hour, do it together, trustees, next time they meet for the budget session, library boards, whatever, get it done for active members. A, it's gonna make sure you're compliant, but more importantly, make sure you're compliant with the law, and also help you make sure you're compliant with the open records and not having any further violations. You haven't had it in your life, but it's a good practice to just get it done. I agree.
Is your database gonna keep, like, school boards and city councils, or just county-related departments?
As of, well, she started building it on Thursday, but as of now, it's gonna include anyone that we appoint, or that's elected county official. Um, I don't know how the schools and the cities are handling this. Um, I, I think we'd be open to help, we'd be open to helping other organizations in the county to make sure they're compliant as well, um, because we do have some agencies that cross over, that has some senior appointees.
Yeah, conference board.
Correct, yeah, that appointees from different jurisdictions. Um, and the law says these governmental bodies to keep their own certificates, so in theory, the conference board should keep it for all its certain members. But I wanna make sure as a county, all the appointees that you guys make, and the elected officials from the county, all have a version of the contract.
You said a certificate, so how would a group of five of us, without breaking open meeting laws, watch the Iowa Public Information Board?
Have it as part of your meeting.
Have it at the meeting, okay.
And that, and that's my recommendation again. Again, if it's available on demand, which I don't know, the first quarter, if it will be, maybe it'll be next year, where they finally give it as an on-demand, but I, I just can't imagine, I'll say this, we grew wrong, which happens a lot, that if this is statewide, all the people it's gonna touch, that they're gonna say, hey, it's quarterly, the first Monday of the quarter at ten AM, you gotta take a round off work or whatever ten A.M. stands for. Eventually, it's gonna be on-demand, where anyone could log on, you had it anytime.
Isn't it within ninety days of the appointment?
Yes, yes, yeah. So, hopefully, the message should be coming. Um, I don't know why they didn't have this ready to go, but that's not even clear. It's not ready yet, I'll keep checking, once it's ready, we'll talk to those two people, and then we'll build a database in my office and keep, keep track of it.
And you have the directory.
We do, yeah, and I made it to me last week, Michelle already looked at that database.
Um, any consequences if you don't do it as, like, a trustee, or a library board, or anybody?
Yeah, I don't have it filed in front of me, but I believe you can be fine, and if there's a violation of your governmental body with respect to open meetings and closed sessions and the sunshine laws, then your compliance is increased, and you have to do it.
I'm just hoping, and I brought this up before, I'm hoping we don't see a decrease of people wanting to be on these boards and commissions.
Well, the good news is you only have to do it once. The other good news is if you serve on multiple, it means you don't have to do it one time. So if you serve on, as a trustee, but also serve school board or any other commissions, so a lot of all the stuff you go for, basically, anyone that spends any tax credit, I ask you with this.
No, I, I get, I get the change, it's just, some of those people are volunteers.
I a hundred percent agree, and they don't put a lot of hours in the beginning with, this is gonna be more of a burden. But that, that's why my suggestion is, the next meeting, if it's on, on demand, just do it as part of your meeting.
And I know, we discussed it at our meeting, it's, I don't know that they're gonna have a class for it, but it's, it's gonna be discussed in the long review at the September meeting that everybody goes to.
The article about that?
Yeah.
Yeah, they may ask for permission, maybe, right, they put together an hour-long presentation, you can do it, I could have done it. Submit your slides to the public information board, and they'll prove if you're appropriate to, to educate people. So I would imagine it's gonna be several that are gonna do that. I can't imagine Polk and Lynn, those big counties, they're probably gonna have their H.R. team, go through that slideshow, get it approved, and then do it for all their people, that'd be my suspicion, but we're not large enough to do that.
And then I bet ISAC will do that, the new office attorney.
I can't imagine all those organizations aren't actually gonna have built into their continuing education or their training, yes, in the future, for new people to like. So, we'll keep that.
Yep, perfect, thank you. Anybody else have a question or concern about that? Discuss going out for an RFP for a generator at the EMS building, it's been on the agenda now for a couple weeks, so, um, you guys saw this in your board packets, I don't know which I sent out, but it should be the eighth and the eleventh, you got those yet? We talked about this a couple weeks ago, who was gonna pay for this, and so that, I think that's still up in the air, but I did check his budget, the EMS budget does have fifty thousand in there for equipment, um, maybe not the intention of a generator, but if we're doing a budget amendment, that's where you're getting one. Remember, the building was built and paid for by ARPA funds. This is a standard generator, twenty-five KW, transfer switch, a pad, um, natural gas hookup for the source, whole building, so this will take care of the whole building. If there's a power outage in the EMS building, um, this thing will kick on within, whatever, five, five, ten seconds, and cut power, or cut their side of the source out, and then this generator will run. Again, we put down bids are due August ninth, eighth, and due back, but we will open them the eleventh.
So we're only gonna go after Generac brand, or some other brands?
There is their brand, like I said, that's up for debate, yep. I, I know a lot of people, and everything you see on TV is Generac's. There's not a dealer wrong, I don't know what else is out there, Kawasaki, I suppose, or any of those.
Kohler.
Kohler.
I don't know which big Kohlers, one of them or another.
Yep, if you guys want all the specs out of it, and just do a twenty-five KW natural gas generator, and don't have that brand, I guess the bids will come back with a brand specific, and you guys have to resolve which one's cheaper, which one's better.
But I think that's probably the right way to go, in my opinion.
Totally up to us to decide if we wanna change a bullet point, or not include it, or just change.
That bullet point, a Generac kit, or equivalent, yeah.
Yeah, we could easily do that.
I think it's better than the other.
I don't either.
I think. Only one brand.
Yeah, so we can change the RFP to Generac kit, or equivalent. I did ask the guy that prepared this, most of our only twenty-two KWs, like, if you would buy one for your house, but since we have a constant, uh, those are maybe for a specific, uh, you won't run the air conditioner and the electric stove at the same time. The twenty-four K will do the whole building one hundred percent, it's a lot more power, just because we know people live there, and we need to get the ambulances out in an emergency situation. And I think, Jeff, maybe if you know, I'm not trying to throw Joe under, we got medicine there, we, we need stuff for refrigerator, we need.
Do you have, uh, any contract in mind?
Um, one-year subscription to Motulink one five. No, I don't, but I don't know, Cat doesn't know.
I have Ziegler in mind.
And they do All Towers and the Sheriff's Office. Do we have him also doing the heritage?
I don't, that's, that's not my country.
But we could easily add that same person, probably.
Yeah.
I mean, does he do more than Cats?
Not really, I think.
They're already not, yes.
Then we got a couple Generacs.
They're Generacs over, over here. That's just those two brands.
Yeah. Any other discussion on this RFP that we put together for a generator at the EMS building? Turnkey functional generator and automatic transfer switch. You will add equivalent on the first board point. We can reserve the right to reject any and all bids at our discretion. Is there a motion to go out for this RFP for simple, for some bids?
I'm making a motion to go for this RFP, second.
Motion by Steve, second by Isaac, to go out for an RFP for a generator at the EMS building. Due back by three o'clock, August eighth, and we will open them on August eleventh. Any other discussion? We'll change the equivalent on the first board point. Uh, discussion, who do you guys want this sent out to? The estimate I've been told is anywhere from ten to twenty-five thousand dollars. It depends on timely, and copper, and tariffs, and everything else that's going on in the world today.
Assume all the electricians.
All the electricians, yeah.
I would say all of them.
Countywide. Okay. All right. We're good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, motion carried. Discuss county handbook and job descriptions for review. Uh, we put this on here since we got an H.R. consultant for a year now, not trying to find work for them, but I think it's time to go through some of the job descriptions in handbook, for state law changes to anything that we are missing. My idea was to email the department head team, and come back with their concerns, bring them back to either me, or Sheila, or somebody, I can compile them into an email and send them off to Ann and Mike. I think the last time we tried this, they got so messy with H.R. that they didn't know the leadership direction, they didn't know what to type, they didn't know what to write, just because we had the thirteen department head team sending emails to that. Wondering if we should just bring them all back, recompile them, and then send one email back to Ann and Mike with our direction.
For the handbook?
For the handbook.
Where are we gonna get the direction?
The department head team, so if you had.
Where's they gonna get the direction from?
Staff, uh.
Because this.
I know, we talked a lot this morning.
Yeah, I mean, it says right here, in the Hopkins and Hummer thing, and I go back to that a lot, um, you know, in the handbook, it's like, one thing, and then you have policies for your departments, so I don't understand how that department had it, they don't know it either, obviously, or this would be done right. There's a way for, I mean, I know we didn't go with them, we went with the people who wrote it before, and I think that's right.
So I think they just need some kind of direction from this governing body to either change something, or?
What would we change, presumably just do this a couple years, two thousand, five thousand?
The notes I had, yeah.
Towers work, and com, and it was a mess because conservation did this, and sheriff did that, and this guy did this, and this guy.
And none of that stuff should be in the handbook. Your department stuff should be a policy in your department, not, handbook should be exempt, non-exempt, work week, overtime, PTO, and EpiMolali, drug testing, P E, P P E, and motion requirements, and, um, NDA accommodations. And then a separate should be here, hours of work and shift differentials, request a leave process, dress, incominess, job descriptions, et cetera. And all of our job descriptions are, I would go, probably old. I mean, my job description is not even remotely close to what I did.
So that's, that's where we need direction. Is it gonna bring Mike and Ann, one of them, up here to look through them all, or is it gonna send them all? Let's give them something to do, right? I'm not saying they didn't do nothing in the past, but.
So should we put them on Zoom, or should we talk to them?
Just hand them a handbook, do they already have one?
They have.
They have, because they did it. So, what's the point, what is the point of what you're saying? Because you're gonna get back the same garbage you did before, it's not right. So are they gonna talk to Brent or something, and figure out how to do their job? Or, we might as well just keep what we have. There's no sense of wasting money looking at this again. I can just speak for the board of health.
Yes, you can.
Uh, the board of health does their own job descriptions, so, um, I'm just saying, and we used to send them a copy up here and put it in a book, now we still do that, but I'm just saying, the board of health does their own job descriptions for their department, and we send it to the H.R. to review our changes. Makes sense. That's how.
So when you do your, when they do the, the board itself does the job descriptions, or Lisa?
Lisa does, does the job description, and then she presents it to the board.
And you guys got approval?
Yes, for approval of all the changes, like our policies. She makes the changes, and then we improve the changes, and that's board, by board motion.
And that's what I was getting at, send an email out, if there's needed changes that we don't know about, have the department head team get them back to us, and then we can send them off and review them, make sure they protect the law changes, that we're not in violation of anything, and then we approve them.
I don't know about the county head, but that's, I would say that you need to tell people to update their job descriptions, because like, they would submit theirs, they're already done. Jeff, you said you have yours updated, you submit this, we're done. Ours, they need to work, but somebody else might think they're fine. Because I'm saying.
You're taking the board over.
We are. So we just tell Roman to get them updated?
Yeah.
Is that what we're missing?
Yeah, I mean, you need to tell people what they, because do I wanna sit there and go telling job descriptions and rewrite them? No, so then I go, fine. You do originally, your first job description was bad, way, way bad. And there's a lot of rules of what to put in the job description, it's like six things. And it's not, it's not supposed to be a detailed, less needed, as needed.
This is on here only for discussion, and, and I think what I've been hearing from four, whatever, two to three, four departments, is things are lacking, so, do you guys wanna?
Well, I, the job descriptions need to be updated, and I, I don't care whether we have, or completely updated, or I think the department head should update it, and then we spend a day or two to be approved. But I know we, you know, we've had, I know we've had job descriptions go out looking for help, and turns out at the end, if things aren't quite right, the job description in the end.
Things change.
So, again, July first, trying to get things updated with job descriptions and handbook concerns, which has to be approved by board supervisors, so. Couple things people have told me is they want sick indication to be used in fifteen-minute increments, um, you know, part-time, I think, I don't have a copy with me right now, but something about benefits, do we have specific people? Because we have that policy now for insurance, that's a federal law, but is that a handbook? And that's one, it's in the handbook. And I think somebody reached out to me in secondary rooms, they want more comp time in secondary rooms, but all for nothing, right?
Isn't there like a new pregnancy thing, like, July first, that you have to get six weeks of pregnancy leave? So, the Ailer's and Coody's sent it, let us know that. But Mike stood here and said, he would let us know, like, if we had questions to ask him. So on July first, are we supposed to say, oh, do you have any H.R. updates for us? Because they don't, I might have given to us? Because I thought I had our handbook.
Can I get it? I, I just think we have to utilize those guys more, just my opinion, and if things are falling through the cracks, you guys need to get it to us, so I can get it off to Ann and Mike. I mean, they responded to me for incident we need to get ready for, um, with, within two, three hours. I'm not gonna talk publicly about it, but there's something that we have to get ready for, for an employee, so. They're equipped to respond back with the federal law changes there, so.
I agree, the handbook for the board of health is, you know, I go, make sure that we follow your rules and regulations in handbook, too. Be compliant.
Well, if you guys wanna do something different, let me know, just trying to help out. I, I think we tell the department head team how to get things updated, you know, to a point.
I just don't understand how it can change when you're dealing with the same people that did it to begin with. That's why I just don't, I'm not getting that.
We would have to give guidance to you.
What you want, we just redid this, and I mean, did you guys get guidance for this? Last revision?
Um, that's been about three years ago, essentially.
It was more, everybody wanted to talk about what they wanted put in it.
And that's where we need the guidance, because lots of inaction in it.
Lots.
Does Hartman, can Hartman help you with that part of the handbook, too, to make sure the laws? Because I think years ago, we, after we did our county handbook, we had Hartman look it over to make sure, is that a possibility, the workers on Hartman?
He's got this.
Hartman helped us with the handbook, I mean, we would have access to turn it.
But they, yeah, because they look, you and you.
That doesn't make sense if we already hired Ailer's, who needs to do our HR.
But they may catch something, but.
Anything else you want me to do, or try to do, or send an email out, say if anybody had any changes or ideas, kind of let the department head team bring back a job description?
If they all need to go back to one spot, or then we need to go through, so.
Right, I know where they follow that, I think we're both in the same, similar way.
Policy, policy.
Policy versus handbook, and we've kind of got all in our, all in our regal, but.
It costs them.
So the base rule was X, and then there was X one for this department, X two for that department, X three for that department, it was all one document.
Yeah.
It was a mess. We went back and forth for, eating after, eating after, eating after eating.
That's what I'm trying to avoid. It really is. So, department head team, if they have concern, or if they want to refresh their job descriptions, get them back to us?
If they want to.
They shall.
Rarely.
They shall review all the job descriptions.
Yeah, and do steps what Ailer's been doing, and all the decisions, and law changes that need to be incorporated in the handbook, they need to do that.
Exactly, well, or recommend them, so we can make a motion to change them. So what I'm hearing is, send an email out to the department heads, and they shall review their job descriptions, what, within a couple weeks? Get them back to us, and then we'll send them off to, uh, H.R.?
Sorry, yeah.
Review and update their job descriptions for seven employees.
I'm not trying to be difficult.
Oh, no.
I just don't think we need to waste more money. Like, let's do it and get it done right for once, and be done with it.
You know, and then the handbook, have you guys been looking for it in the handbook? Just have them look it over, and see if there's any state changes or federal changes? Or do you wanna open that up to the whole department head team, if they had any ideas?
I think, I think they should review it, but I think they should bring it back to us.
So for the handbook, have them review a handbook, and get back to me or Sheila with some changes, so we can present them to the board.
You said that, or you referred, the department heads, or you referred to others?
Department heads. Or, did somebody say?
So when Ailer's and Coody, when they do, like, the overall of the handbook, and like, they were saying the policies would come from the departments? Like, if there's, like, payroll, P K on this stage, or whatever, you know, whatever.
Policies are, policies are the departments.
Yeah, so would we need everybody's breakdown? That's what Renee, I think, is getting at, if I do.
I think they're obvious policies.
What? Policies are, we keep the policies on our department, I assume the chair, so the same thing for policies, they got the chairs, guys, they work their hours, and stuff like that, and here, here again, you're guys gonna have to decide what you're gonna do with the courthouse, are you gonna make them forty hours? Because that's gonna be a change in your handbook, correct?
It is.
So, but isn't the handbook the overall, so it just gives us highlights, and then if it's broke down, it's based on different?
Yeah. That's all that handbook is, is a guide.
So like Renee said, it's too big, there's too much of E, so it's just the overall, so would Ailer's, Coody take care of that part of it, no? Yeah, no, he would break it down.
We'd tell them to delete page ten. But they were gross.
Yeah, but I knew, but wouldn't they give us the, unless it's government?
It's a tuss.
Oh, really? Okay, then I would.
And I think that's why a lot of things got added, is because the team wanted it added, and we kind of just said yes, right? We can easily delete stuff. And make it policies per department.
You know, especially on these departments, or whatever it is.
There is, all right.
Does every department treat things differently?
Yes, they do.
And that's what we did.
We have pretty much five different comp times. County conservation has so many hours, and they wrote this so many hours.
Maybe it's just a record.
We'll put that in together, bring them back to you guys.
Would you think, what is that?
It's not my value. I would put it through last.
Anything else on that for review? Committee of status, thanks for that.
Harlem meeting, Thursday, July tenth. We had about two hours in the closed session, discussing things. It was, well, there were group financial reports, uh, group final performance, the insurance for the whole organization, Thursday. We elected new officers, which they actually have new officers, with the exact same board, didn't change one bit, same president, same territory. We did have a little discussion on the county monopole visits, that will come up, um, they will happen whenever Troy's next scheduled visit will be, and they will be based around previous deficiencies we've had, but probably not what you're gonna be thinking. So we're thinking it's gonna be seven, seven, eight years old, so we describe this show to public health. Discuss the hearing testing procedure, or what OSHA's requiring, now, there was quite a discussion I had, based on price, but I had talked to Renee, and it sounded like we must be getting a better deal than the other nine counties, so. We talked a little bit about the dividend policy based on the workers' count, that was talked about, I think, the last safety meeting with Judy. And then, pretty much, well, the, the I T Zoom cyber calls are going to discontinue because they're not getting enough participation from all the I T people. And the rest of the stuff is pretty much held around the employment practices in our schedule for September eleventh, and what we were going to have for the program, so.
You got a question, Scott? I know me and you talked about it, but remember our six-county meeting that we were like one of the only counties that didn't do an ISAC audit for I T? Do you guys want me to set something up for that? We'll talk about it in a future J Day, and?
Well, I, I would. Yeah, I would be in favor, it seems like almost everybody at Harlem on that board has done that audit through ISAC, as well as most of the people at the six-county meetings, I don't know, they've been, uh, that audit, and I think that everybody seems to really, like, I mean, they say it opens their eyes, and.
I believe there's no cost to it, you just gotta get away unless.
Yeah, I don't think there's any cost, but.
So, ISAC has their own I T people, they come up to the county, and they do phishing, they do, uh, training, uh, and they just do an audit to see where we're at now.
Don't come right here and sit down, we're gonna do it. From what most of the counties have said, within a minute or two, they've broken into half the computers in town.
So, just keep that in mind, I might reach out to them to see if, when they're available, and if they'd be willing to come up here and do an ISAC I T audit, since we are members to ISAC.
Yeah, so many old counties did it, taught us some value, good value, so.
Anybody else have a committee assignment last week, or in the past? Look, you're good. Discuss future agenda items. Just to let you guys all know, I won't be here. I'll be in DC all next week. As of right now, all I really have is the solar ordinance, I guess, if we are ready for the 21st. Otherwise, if there's no pending action. Vice Chair, I guess, we can either decide to cancel the meeting due to no pending action or you guys can have a meeting with me. I'll be on a bus from here to DC and back. Fair enough. But as of right now, the only thing that I see that has a timeline would be a solar, solar ordinance if we want to make a vote to have the first public here. Right, Dave?
Correct.
Otherwise, I don't know anything else for future agenda items. I guess the budget amendments. Sheila will compile and get back to us. You guys know both estimates for the RFPs. Then the RFP won't be out until after August 1st. I did get a text email from Travis Fiers this morning. He and Ray, or me and Ray are having a conference call tomorrow at 9:00 to discuss the TIF project. So I could update you guys on that, I guess, either through Scott next Monday or the 28th to see what Travis is thinking about a TIF bond. Otherwise. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Motion by Travis to adjourn at 3:42. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed?